Everyone, welcome to the City Commission Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on June 11th, 2024, and ask the City Clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Bray.
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to say the invocation and will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, we love you and we adore you, and we pray tonight for this commission. We pray for our mayor, we pray for each of us as commissioners, for our city manager and city clerk, city employees, and God, we pray tonight that every, as we deliberate, as we discuss the items on this agenda, that everything that we do and everything that we say will benefit this community and be righteous in your sight. We thank you again for the privilege. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I'll ask the City Clerk to read the items recommended for approval unless anyone has an item they'd like removed. City Clerk?
Approved minutes for the May 28th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receiving filed documents, reappointment of Carol Young to the Paducah McCracken County Senior Citizens Board. This term shall expire June 22nd, 2027. Personnel actions, a municipal order amending the fiscal year 2023 through 2024 position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. A municipal order amending the fiscal year 2024 pay grade schedule for the employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky.
So move. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. So we'll move to municipal orders. We have, we have three municipal orders tonight. And the first one, I'll go ahead and ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Carol Galt for employment as interim planning director and authorizing the mayor to execute saying.
So move.
Second.
City Manager, would you walk us through this one?
Sure, thank you. Mayor and Commissioner, as you are aware, we have had a void at the leadership position in the planning department since the recent resignation by our former planning director. And in reviewing opportunities and the need to provide some assistance and leadership in that department, we've reached out to and asked, and for your consideration tonight, is to do a six-month appointment of Carol Galt to be the interim planning director for a period that would begin on June 13th, so just a couple of days. The agreement would be that she would provide help and leadership over that, attend the necessary functions that the director would, would do. And it would be based on, on a salary every two weeks, just like our regular employees get. And then part of the agreement also is that, besides, excuse me, remuneration, we would also include a single health insurance coverage during that period as well.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll weigh in on this one a little bit first, and then any of the Commissioners who'd like to weigh in, I would invite that. But just talking about Carol, I think all of us up here, of course, are familiar with Carol. She's a former city commissioner. She has a lot of experience in the city. She's also a, she was a Main Street Director at one time, so she's actually been an employee of the city before. She's very passionate about the city and wants to give back, and it was just hard for us with a void in leadership, it was just hard for us to pass up the opportunity to utilize her experience. So I think she's very passionate about getting started and jumping in. There's many boards that the planning director is responsible for, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of things going on in planning. It's a critical department for the, for the city. And a void in leadership is really not, not something that we want to have happen. So that would be my input, but I would invite anybody else to, that's got. Buzz?
Just a comment, just, I've met with Carol, and, I mean, I'm all excited about her coming on and everything, but I do think that she will need some help, particularly on our housing initiatives. You know, I really think that we need to get a consultant in, help augment the work there. That department is already understaffed when she's coming in, and I think that it's really gonna be difficult unless we get some help in that department, pretty quickly, too, because there's a lot of initiatives. I counted them, five of our initiatives, yearly initiatives, are tied directly to that department. And so unless we get that department up and running with the amount of people, we're gonna go a year without meeting our goals in some of those areas. So that's my comment.
I think we've been trying to get some help in that department for quite some time now, and I think Carol's leadership will help us move forward in that.
I think, you know, we have, we have discussions going on about, you know, some possible solutions with housing, and so we will continue those discussions and, and continue to evaluate, you know, those opportunities. And so I don't, I don't think this, this really stagnates that discussion at all.
No, I don't. I'm saying I want to pour gasoline on the fire. That's what I'm saying.
You're talking about more staff to help her staff up that department.
More staff.
And consultants, whatever it is.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Yep.
And I think, you know, I'm thrilled. I've served with Commissioner Galt, former Commissioner Galt, and I'm thrilled.
Okay.
One thing I did fail to mention is, is that, you know, we did, when we looked at, at opportunities, you know, for this, we did explore, you know, some professional services outside HR Gov, who just helped us with our search for the city engineer and, and some others that have some type in this space, but, you know, ultimately it came back to when this opportunity presented itself. We felt this was the best for the organization as a whole to bring this forward in this manner.
Yeah, the results we've had, you know, from the last search wasn't all that great from the consultant. So I think, I think it's great that we can identify a candidate and forward on it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm fine. Thank you.
City Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Okay, I'll ask the City Clerk to read the next municipal order.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order declaring the property at 318 Broadway to be surplus, transferring the property to Serco LLC for compensation in the amount of $10,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Serco LLC and all documents related to saying.
So move.
Second.
So as Michelle comes up here, I'll just do a little bit of an intro. Michelle, this is, this is an agreement for the, for the renowned Kreski Lot that's been vacant for a long time in downtown, and I think we have an excellent solution for it, and with that, that's the lead in, so.
Thank you. Team me up, Mayor Bray. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and City Clerk. I'm excited to be here to talk about a unique outdoor, excuse me, development project. Of course, 318 Broadway, but I think it's always gonna be known as Kreski in some way. So the proposed development agreement is with Serco Properties. We have representatives here to walk through kind of their vision and speak to the project, but I wanted to mention a few things before that. So Serco is already invested in downtown businesses like Overunder and Stella's, so they're already invested in our downtown, which is great to see them expanding. Essentially, it's a multi-use green space with outdoor entertainment, food and beverages, seating, playground areas, pop-up shops, and it's kind of a unique, some unique features that we don't have downtown. So before we walk through the renderings with the group, I wanted to talk a little bit about some key aspects of the development agreement because it is a city-owned lot. So 30 days after the execution of this agreement, they're to get the design to the city for approval. Once that is approved, they'll go through their permitting process, and then at that point, after they have their permits, we would transfer the property, and they have agreed to purchase the site for $10,000. Once they have their permits, also, they have 30 days to start construction and then 15 months to complete construction. We do have a reversion clause where we get the, the property would revert back to the city if for some reason they don't meet the milestones, but we don't anticipate that to be the case. They're very excited for a project, they've already had their kickstart meeting, so we already have, we already have things in progress. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Drew with Serco to walk through the renderings unless there are any questions.
That'd be great. Welcome, Drew.
So how's it go to, like, make this flip?
Don't, you don't do a lot of, you don't, you don't do a lot of PowerPoint?
I do not. I'm better with a hammer than I am about anything else. All right, so I'll give you the basic rundown. I think that she described it pretty, pretty accurately. We want, what we envision is a multi-use space. To give you an idea of what we envisioned when we first started this, is, you know, Blake and I, my partner, were always trying to think of things that we just, maybe holes that downtown doesn't have. And so especially when we started passing like the EDC, we wanted to like create a reason to actually maybe walk around and have a drink outside and, you know, things like that, right? So, and we also wanted a place with our cars and cigars and things like that, we started to see more families coming downtown. And same thing, something to do other than just getting ice cream. So we thought if we could make a space that incorporates all of those things in to where you could go get to-go food, you could go get a drink, and you have like what I'm gonna call a park, for lack of a better term, to go enjoy. It's where you could go with your family, you could bring other food, other drinks in. We wanna have playground equipment, we want it to be dog-friendly, we'll have a sectioned office, you'll see like, it's what's being rendered there for dogs where you could actually sit, you know, chill out with your, with your buddy, with your four-legged buddy, and enjoy that stuff. We also want, obviously, it has an outdoor bar, we have, we'll have seating, we'll have obviously food, things like that. We want to expand maybe our menu from Overunder into the outdoors. And we also want a permanent stage to where we can do things like outdoor events and possibly even like, you know, a true like summer, not necessarily a festival, but you know, like a summer, you know, music scene where every Saturday night you have bands coming in or perhaps maybe more than that. So we kind of envision that it has a lot of opportunity. We also want a place for other local shops where they can do pop-up shops. So especially, I think that's important for new businesses when they start out, because especially if you're on a side street or just not on the first two blocks of Broadway, sometimes it's hard to get anybody to know who you are. So a place like that where shops can set up for free and do that. And then hopefully we can do more things, like, you know, things for, I don't know, we envision even like, you know, Halloween stuff or, you know, Christmas things, just stuff kind of out of season also. So I'll kind of walk you through the way it looks. I have been named the Kreski Lot currently until somebody's willing to pay more for a different name. We can, we start that. So that's a good overview right there. So this gives you an idea of, and this is, you know, as closely as we can get it right now for the renderings. So this is kind of our dedicated dog area, which will probably have a double enclosure, and we would probably have tables in there so that you could go in and actually sit, you know, hang out with your pup and play. You'll have your seating, these are your kiosks or your like small pop-up shops. We want what we're currently referring to as like informal playground equipment or just like untraditional, so we don't know exactly what that means. So, you know, we're not, we don't know exactly what we want, but we want to kind of spread it throughout. So that possibly a family could go, you know, somebody can check out the shop, you know, you can watch the football game, kids could be playing, you know, an actual reason to be hanging out for an extended period of time in downtown. And then you'll notice in the back, you'll go more into your stage area and kind of like a tiered seating so that it would be more like amphitheater style sort of thing. And I do think that with the location of the music, it's just right next to a parking lot, there's no residences. I've heard there's been a complaint with noise around here. I'm not for sure, but I think we can eliminate that because there's not a lot of housing around there. And so, and obviously we can operate inside of that, but I think it's a great area because it's not surrounded by any housing that I'm aware of currently. So just basic renderings to give you an idea of what it would be like, just basic seating out and about. And with this also, let's go through in the back, and we've also verbally, we also have an agreement to buy the building, the bottom side of 314, so that we'll be able to expand back into that for our restrooms. So we'll be able to place all of that there, so we'll have, you know, outdoor restrooms to meet, you know, ADA and as well as like the capacity compliances for the whole area. And then we can also utilize some of this, probably as a serving window for doing, we're open, we were still thinking it through, but we're thinking maybe wood-fired pizzas and things like that. And obviously like to go through from over under, and once again, people are welcome to come in on their own. We want it to be open to the public, you know, kind of, we'll keep it with our hours, kind of, we'll unlock it in the, in the morning and lock it back at night sort of gig. But that's kind of how we envision it. Great place for like doing kickoffs for football or, or just outdoor events in general. To give much respect, just kind of a big giant version of Max's Outdoors, you know? I always enjoyed that place every time I go to it. So just a much bigger version of that. So, any questions?
It's neat. Great vision. Beautiful. Would that be AstroTurf or?
I'm having, looking into turf. They actually are recently actually ripping up the field at McCracken County High School, but unless we wanted to also have the lines in a football field, I might as well look at other options, which might be cool, but I saw them picking it up, so I investigated.
Good sports bar.
Yeah, right? But I do think that, yeah, I think turf would be in my best interest for the, like, the long-term mowing of it, but there is gonna be some upkeep. There's a lot of more, I think, vegetation and flowers that are being represented here that we kind of see it. I mean, I would love it to be very lush, you know, just very kind of pretty and outdoors, something we can keep up with, but it is gonna be something that requires upkeep as time goes on.
Yeah.
But we think it's something that, I mean, we could do outdoor movies, we can do concerts, we can do, we could have an event that doesn't have to like, I mean, the city does a great job of setting up and taking down a stage on a regular basis, but sure would be nice not to have to move the stage. I think we can do a great deal of the events that currently people are forced to close streets for and other things. I think we can host that right there and without the need of permitting and this and that, because we're already there. We're already doing it. We can house it right there. We're certainly willing and want to work with our other local business, businesses to allow it to be lucrative for everybody. We're not just trying to stranglehold it and it just be all ours. So we, we envision this as helping all the businesses and not just ourselves, so.
Beautiful.
Thank you. We're very excited. We've been working on this mentally for years. This is actually the very first project we ever envisioned doing way back when it was Melinda Winchester. And so it's just been a long time coming to ever get to this point, so we're very excited.
Well, I'm sorry it's taken us so long.
Not, I don't even know y'all were sitting up there back then, but we've been working on it for a while mentally, and I'm glad to see it come to this point so we can, I mean, all we've ever done is tried to build things that we think we would enjoy, and so that's what we're doing all over again. We're just building a place we want to hang out with and hopefully everybody else wants to hang out there, too.
Well, there's lots of things that I like about the project, but, but probably one of the top things I like about it is it's, it's, you know, a partnership that's committed to downtown.
That's right.
So you guys have already got businesses down there, you understand downtown, you're committed to it, you know, I've said over and over and over that downtown is our crown jewel, and so any way that we can expand it, make it better, help downtown grow.
We fully agree. And I love the ability, obviously, anyone that knows me knows, my wife and I, you know, tried to make fetch happen in the past. We didn't do so good at that, but being able to bring something back that actually is very dog-friendly, that's very important to us also. So I think that's gonna be really great for downtown where you can actually, you know, legally sit outside, as we've approved that with the Health Department, be able to enjoy like, you know, an outdoor meal and a beverage, what have you, and have your dogs there, your kids there, like, it's, it'll be unique. It'll be quite unique, I think.
Great, well, thank you for your commitment.
Thank you all.
We'll give him a round of applause. We're all kind of one stage.
Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Okay, we'll move to the next municipal order, and I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting grant funds through the Department for Local Government for the better utilizing investments to leverage development build grant project in an amount of $3,500,000 to improve the Paducah Riverfront and pedestrian corridor from the convention center to downtown, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding for all funds and all other documents related to saying.
So moved. Been a long time coming.
Okay, Hope.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. Yes, this is great news to be able to stand up here and share with you all that last week we received notice from the Department of Local Government that the City of Paducah had received this 3.5 million through House Bill 1 appropriations. This is for 2024 through 2026. DLG has been designated as the organization to manage that funding through a grant that will come to the city. So with your all's approval tonight, we should next week or later this week get a memorandum of agreement from DLG to be able to move forward with that funding and add that to our build grant project.
It does help complete the money that we needed. I know the city's still gonna have to put some in, and we already had allotted to put some in, but we got the 10.4 from the federal government, so now this really adds to it, so.
Yes, it does, and Melanie.
I think we need to thank our state legislators, too, that allocated this for us. We've done that, you know, some, but.
Oh, it's been a lot of hard work. We worked with the governor, we worked with our legislators, and we advocated for the last six months. There's been just a lot of work put into this, and so it paid off, it paid dividends. And it's very exciting that we can get started on this, this build grant and this riverfront development project, which we've been working on for so long. I see Melanie up there. Are you gonna?
Yes, she's gonna give you an update.
Give us an update on where we are with the project.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a quick update on where we are with the build grant. We've actually, we've had some movement lately. Y'all may remember we did some archaeological surveying in the executive inn portion and down by the riverfront, and that report has been completed and has been sent to Mayor Ad, and then they will, they will put it out to our partners. That is our last requirement for the programmatic agreement, and I am pleased and excited to announce that we put the bid out this weekend.
Oh, wow.
So we will have a bid opening on July the 9th, so we are so excited about that. This has been a long time coming, but we do thank Commissioner Wilson, I know you and the mayor both worked very hard to get us the funding and worked through the chamber and with all of our legislators and the governor and all, but we are, we're on the cusp of act, of actually doing this, so thank y'all so much.
But everything with the testing in that parking lot came out okay, obviously?
Yes, there was nothing of archaeological significance found. I think they found some bolts and, you know, some things like that, but there was nothing archaeological.
Yay.
Yay, yes. Thank you all so much.
Good news. Thank you, thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Hope. City Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Okay, we have two ordinances to adopt this evening. The first one, I'll ask, I'll go ahead and ask the City Clerk to please read it, and then we'll, we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion, the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing Section 126-88, reasonable accommodation for recovery homes of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves the addition of Paducah Code of Ordinances, Section 126-88, entitled Reasonable Accommodations for Recovery Homes. This section is being established to provide a streamlined approach for the approval of recovery homes while protecting the rights of people with disabilities and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The zoning text amendment was heard by the Planning Commission on May 6th, 2024, and forwarded to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Come on, second.
Josh?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Clerk. We did have one change to the ordinance between first reading and now, and that specific change was to the insurance requirements. We did speak to Jonathan Philpott, who is the Executive Director of the Kentucky Recovery Housing Network, and also with one of our local operators, and they had voiced concern about how we had the insurance portion set up. So after learning what the state did, we decided to mirror that in our text amendment. So the way that it's gonna read specifically under subsection M1, "The operator of any recovery home shall maintain and provide proof to the city of general liability and homeowner slash renters insurance coverage in an amount deemed appropriate by the operator of the recovery home and the certifying organization." So that is exactly what the KRHN requires, and we've simply mirrored that, and that seems to have alleviated some of the concerns at the state level. Further, on Friday, Ms. Krueger and I spoke with Mr. Dallas Hurley. He is with the Voice, I'm sorry, the Volunteers of America. What Volunteers of America does is they advocate for recovery homes in Kentucky, Tennessee, West Virginia, and part of Indiana. He had some questions for us and some concerns, and Ms. Krueger and I worked through those with him, and ultimately he was satisfied with our ordinance. And his specific thing that he closed with is that our proposed ordinance would not impact McCracken County's being recovery-ready, so we was glad to hear that. So with that, I would like to turn it back over to you for any questions you might have.
Well, I'm just gonna, first of all, I just want to thank, thank you, Josh, Michelle, everybody that's kind of worked on this initiative. This has been a real challenge, I think, because the state of Kentucky really just enacted or is in the process of enacting a law as it relates to recovery homes that actually does not go into effect until July 1st. And so we've been working through this for several months, we've had a misstep or two, we figured out, you know, what, what we didn't do exactly right. We've taken input from a lot of different people, including the state of Kentucky, which, which had a lot to say about, about this ordinance, and, and I think that we've struck a balance between the need for recovery homes in our community and maintaining neighborhoods, which, of course, we know is very important. We've learned a lot through the process. I see you shaking your head, Josh.
Yes, very much so.
I think we've, you know, it's just been, this whole thing with recovery homes around the, around the country is, it's, you know, it's, it's everywhere, and, and they're popping up everywhere, and we're trying, we're trying to figure out how to deal, deal with it, and I think we've struck a good balance, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just, you know, I hope this satisfies some of the neighborhoods that were affected, you know, just a lot of people watching this. You know, just a lot of people watching this. I mean, I understand some of the backstory, but a recovery home had come in, and they had bought up four homes right in a row in a neighborhood. And so basically, my turn, they turned them into dormitories. And so the neighborhood, the neighbors that owned the property adjacent to it were upset because they were worried that it would change the flavor of the neighborhood. And so that was the driver for this change or this regulation, so that it does preserve our neighborhoods. We, Commissioner Henderson and I attended two meetings, and there were a lot of unhappy residents. And so hopefully, this will, will help maintain those neighborhoods. So.
I think, I think it's safe to say that anybody in a neighborhood where a recovery home pops up, you know, they just don't know what to think about it. You know, they wonder about whether or not it's going to change the nature of the neighborhood. But as we discovered, recovery homes are protected. And so there's certain things that we can do and certain things that we can't. And like I said, I think we've, we've tried to balance that as best we possibly can. So time will tell. I'm sure we're going to learn more. But, but we have an ordinance in place, and we're going to start working with, you know, making sure that we understand where the, where the recovery homes are that are in the city of Paducah now. I think we know where most of them are, but maybe, maybe not. I'm not sure, you know, but.
The KRHN is supposed to maintain a list at some point, whenever they get their applications in for who's supposed to be certified. And that will be made available at some point, but they don't have a specific date on that yet.
Very good. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay. I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
And the last ordinance we have to adopt is maybe the most important. We're adopting our budget for the next fiscal year. And I'll ask the city clerk to, to read through it, and then City Manager to talk about it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government." This ordinance is summarized as follows. Adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at $120,854,935, and summarized by fund as follows. General: $57,637,779. MAP Fund: $2,501,705. Investment: $8,315,330. Tiff: $0. E911: $3,721,817. Opioid: $64,200. Court Awards: $116,165. Room Tax: $1,850,650. Debt: $3,617,780. CIP: $11,296,250. Bond Fund: $15,000. Solid Waste: $6,937,750. Transient Moat Dock: $442,681. Rental: $154,482. Radio Depreciation Fund: $25,035. Fleet Maintenance: $879,981. Fleet Lease Trust: $2,425,255. Insurance: $1,348,140. Health Insurance: $3,659,420. PFPF: $786,765. Other Trusts: $74,425 for a total of $120,854,935.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor and Commission, we went through this in quite detail last time. Just a couple of highlights to remind you. First and foremost, budget process, as you are keenly aware, is a long process, and it takes a lot of hard work by not only our executive leadership team, our finance, and your engagement as well is so important to the process. And overall, all funds together of $110 million. Of that, you know, the general fund, just to highlight, 70% of our expenses in the general fund are attributed to our personnel cost, and 55% of the total general fund expenditures are allocated to public safety. So you can really see where a lot of our general fund allocation goes to. And, you know, we've talked about a lot last time, how many years ago, the Commission had increased the occupational tax by half a percent to use that to help fund investment, fund for broad categories such as our debt service and economic development, neighborhood redevelopment, infrastructure and capital development, and in the Commission's priorities. And this budget continues along that mindset. And also, you know, historically, and we continue with this budget, is that we do take a conservative fiscal stance. We are always, always aware, keenly aware that these are public dollars and were allocated to us, and we are going to be good stewards of those dollars. And so kudos to our team that's always taken that mindset from the get-go as we start building the budget. A couple other highlights that we mentioned last time is that we are keeping our economic support to major external partners consistent with the last couple of years. We did allocate more to our municipal road aid. We, you know, last year, we had about a 30% increase, and this year, we increased that another half million dollars. So our allocation, budgeted allocation, is $2 million towards municipal road projects. And then we'll have another close to half million dollars anticipated that'll come in from the state on top of that. So in this budget, we'll have roughly two and a half million dollars going towards our, our road projects. And we've heard in the past, the presentation about the five-year lookout at our road plan and how that is. And we have a number of roads that are in very poor condition, haven't had the funds. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to continue to invest in our roads so we can have safe roads across the community. Won't get there overnight. Won't get there in this budget cycle, but it is, is a process that, excited that we're continuing to invest in. Also, we continue investment into Southside and our facilities. And then also, we're setting, to your point earlier, Commissioner, and one of those priorities about housing, allocating a million dollars towards housing initiatives in this, in this budget. So we did have to use some of our set aside reserves to be able to do some projects in this, and about nine million one-time funds to do projects to increase work towards stormwater, our build grant, our match, you know, on that, neighborhood signage, those type of things. And so those are the highlights that, again, we went in very much detail. I don't know if Audra is here because John wasn't, but is there anything that I missed, Audra, that you?
Pretty good.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else that you'd like me to speak to?
Just, I'll just mention, the road, the road thing is, is something that is very important. It has been important. And we've ramped up the budget this year. And, and we really, one of the things I've talked with the engineering department is we just need to give more visibility to where we are with our road projects. And, and understand, you know, where our priorities are so that people can, can get an idea of that. I think there's been times when that's like a deep, dark secret. And while we can't always, you know, pave every road that someone wants us to pave, often the projects get, get held up because there's either Paducah Power, Paducah Water, JSA work that's going to go on in that area, and it doesn't make sense to do roadwork before those projects. So we have to coordinate. So there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that people don't, people don't understand. But we are going to be more transparent about where we are with our road projects going forward. And I just wanted to call out this housing thing. Commissioner Smith brought it up, but the Commission all came together in our strategic planning session and committed to, to more housing. We understand that we have to, we have to put dollars behind that. And so those dollars are in this new budget. So you all will see some, some exciting things coming in the next fiscal year in, in new housing. So those will be my comments. If there are no further comments, I'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
So we have, we are introducing an ordinance entitled, which is an ordinance that creates a real estate parcel fee for the new 911 system that's in the process of being installed. And I'll ask the city clerk to please read it, and then we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing and Imposing a Fee on All Occupied Real Estate Parcels Located Within the Territorial Limits of the City of Paducah to Facilitate Funding for the Provision of Adjoint 911 Services," as more fully set forth in the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Paducah and McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes an annual parcel fee on all occupied individual residential units and all occupied individual commercial, religious, charitable, educational, and public use, use units located within the territorial limits of the City of Paducah. A parcel fee shall be placed upon the City of Paducah property tax bills, beginning with the 2024 tax bill and continuing every year thereafter. The due dates will be the same as the property tax due date set by the Board of Commissioners. In the first year, occupied rental units will be eligible to claim a credit of $22.50 per unit against the annual fee due in accordance with KRS 83A.060, the following section of ordinance, which imposes fees, is hereby set forth in full. The Board of Commissioners hereby imposes the following annual parcel fees on all parcels of occupied real property, as more accurately defined in section 3 through 5 of this ordinance, which are located within the jurisdictional limits of the City of Paducah. Supercommercial retail unit contains structure in excess of 25,000 square foot, $1,550. Large commercial retail unit contains structure between 7,500 and 25,000 square foot, $860. Medium commercial retail unit contains structure between 25,000 and 75, and 7,500 square foot, $325. Small commercial retail unit, structure between 1 and 2,500 square foot, $210. Non-commercial retail unit, which shall include but not be limited to parking lots, garages, or other areas designed for the parking of motor vehicles, as defined by KRS 186.010, subsection 4, whereby the owner, occupant, lessee, or possessor of any portion of the parcel leases, rents, licenses, bales, or otherwise allows the parking or storage of motor vehicles in exchange for consideration, $150. Public use units, emergency service, governmental, religious, charitable, and educational, $35. Residential units, $45. In the event a parcel is mixed use, the parcel shall be assessed at the highest applicable assessment rate.
Come a second. I mean, go on.
So I was just gonna say, I mean, I'd like to get everybody's, you know, feedback. And I'd just remind everybody, this is the first reading. So we're not passing this ordinance tonight. But there's been a ton of work done on this.
If, Michelle's got some of the slides that she showed. Can we bring those up on the-
Sure.
-screen? And I think, so Friday, Judge Executive and Michelle presented at the chamber a little bit about this. And Michelle, you want to speak to your slides? And that, I think that'll give some overview to lead into discussion.
You shouldn't have had to prepare for this. I mean, you did it Friday, so.
All right. That's all right. That's all right.
Well, I was, so she's a trooper because at the last minute, I asked her.
Too much Michelle tonight. That's how I feel about it. Anyway. So I'm glad to talk about the 911 parcel fee. And just to reiterate what Mayor Bray said, there's been a ton of work done related to this item. This is a city-county partnership. And we'll walk through the 911 fee, what it looks like. So what we'll start off with are the proposed parcel fee key components. So what this is, is this is an annual fee on real estate parcels that would fund emergency 911 services. Now, this is allowed by state statutes, and also I think the Kentucky Supreme Court has made rulings on this. And we modeled our fees closely to Kenton County. I understand that, or their structure, and that there were several meetings, kind of fact-finding meetings to understand their structure. And that's how we used to kind of build the base of ours. The rates will be based on classification of use. Residential, commercial, and public use are the three classifications. And then the city and the county would adopt the same classification and use of rate structure. So you would have the same fee whether you were in the city and county, but you would only be assessed one fee. So if you were in the city, you would pay for that, that parcel fee. And if you were in the county, you'd pay the parcel fee. It's not stacking. That was one question that came up Friday that I wanted to make sure was clear. And that this revenue source would be used to fund 911 operations and system maintenance. This was something the mayor really wanted to reiterate, that this can only be used to fund those 911 operations, and that money would be, you know, set aside solely for, for that.
So I think the point is, we cannot collect more money, you know, than what we have to spend. So if we do collect more money, you know, then we have to either reduce the fee, or actually, in some cases, might have to give it back. So we, we want to make sure that we're, we're being very careful about that.
Before I get into the rates, is there anything you wanted to add, Mayor Bray or City Manager, about this?
No, I mean, to, to that point, that last point, the state statute does require that these funds are set aside in a separate account. They can't be commingled into with general fund. And so if there is, in a given year, if the collection comes in more than the operations are needed, and that's operations and maintenance and upgrades, then that overage is credited into the next year. And then you would, the, the adopted board that is set part of this that we'll get into, would look at that and restructure the rates to, so that you don't have that occur in, in the future.
Okay. So, so this is a look at the rates. I know this was discussed last night at the fiscal court as well. For residential, we're looking at $45 for an annual fee. And the, the description is, is pretty self-explanatory. It's a residential space designed or utilized for residential purposes. And each apartment or duplex unit would have a separate residential fee. So if there was a duplex on a parcel, that would be $90. For public use, that's a $35 annual fee per parcel. So that includes governmental, religious, charitable, and education are some examples of those.
Okay.
Moving on to commercial, this is one, this is one thing I talked about, too. We call it commercial retail, but really, it's, it's for businesses and private enterprises. So it's called commercial retail, but don't get hung on, hung up on that. It's really for businesses or private enterprises. And so the categories are broken out here. We have supercommercial, large commercial, medium commercial, small commercial, and then a non-retail section. And the supercommercial is $1,550 per parcel, and that's really for structures greater than 25,000 square feet. So an example, that would be like a big box, like a Walmart-type store is an example for those. With the large commercial, that's $860 per parcel, and that's a structure between 7,500 and 25,000 square feet. I, I do have a couple of examples. I don't know if you want to meet it so people can have their, kind of in that brain. So I don't call people out. Would you like that? Okay. An example is Olive Garden, Independence Bank across from Mellow Mushroom. Those are about 9,000 square feet. So those are a couple of examples of buildings that would fall into the large commercial.
That's very helpful.
Okay. With medium commercial, between 2,500 and 75,000 square feet, that's $325. And the example we pulled, and I ran with it, is Randy's Body Shop, right there on the corner. That's 5,600 square feet. And I want to, well, I'll finish this, but I want to take one step back. After, the small commercial, that's between 1 and 2,500 square feet. That's $210, or $210. An example would be Red's Donut Shop. That's about 1,200 square feet. And I think it's really important to note that this is all information we're receiving from PVA. So this classification, the square footage, the number of units, all of that's information that we receive, the city and county receive from PVA. So I think that's really important to note as well. And then we have non-retail commercial, but really, when you look at that definition, it's for parking lots and, and garages. So that's pretty limited in scope.
I'm just kind of curious. Are there many 911 calls from a parking lot?
I'm just kind of curious. Are there many nine-one-one calls from a parking lot? I'm just, that's what I don't see as fair about this. But I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry. I was just.
No, that's a great question. If you want to, or you want me to handle that?
I don't have the data in front of me, but yes, you'll have fender benders and people backing into, to one another in parking lots and things like that, that we do receive calls. Or, and then sometimes if it's, you know, even to, to the point of where a puncture of a tank or something, it depends on how, how fast somebody was going or whatever, or the age of the vehicle, that we have to send, you know, cleanup crews out.
Good question.
There is something I'll mention. There is an appeal process that we're going to put into place. And, and as we, as we discussed, a group of us went up to Kenton County, you know, and talked with them. They, they implemented this, I want to say, like, maybe 10 years ago. It's been, it's been a good while.
Sure.
And so they walked us through their journey when they first implemented it, and the process they went through, and the people who, who questioned the fees and the structure. And so they set up this appeals board.
Yep.
And so I think we, as much as you can, before we implement, we put, we use that as part of the, the ordinance.
Absolutely.
And, and I think we'll learn as we go along. But, you know, it's just the process that we've adopted.
That's right. No, I think that's a great point. There will be an established appeals process. There will be a five-member board. And when you receive your, you know, property tax bill, if you're concerned that there's a, you know, an issue with the classification, you can, you can submit to this appeals board for consideration. So. Yep, that's a great point. A couple of other part, I have a couple more slides on parcel fee components. A mixed-use parcel will play, pay the highest applicable rate. So if you have commercial and residential, look at the number of units of residential, times that by the 45, and then compare it to the commercial rate, and whichever is higher is what you would pay. The rates will be adjusted based on the CPI. We do plan to repeal the landline phone fee once we have sufficient revenue sources that's funding nine-one-one. And then Mayor Bray, you brought this up, too. There is, part of the interlocal agreement establishes a nine-one-one board. It's a five-member committee, citizen committee, to appoint in from the city, two from the county, and then one joint appointee.
That's correct.
And this board will have, you know, they'll look at the budget each year. They will present to both the fiscal court and the city. I think they're, to also recommend rate changes. So they will be looking at this rate and the budget annually, and presenting to the fiscal court and the Board of Commissioners on it. So we are targeting the nine-one-one parcel fee for the upcoming property tax billing cycle. This slide does mention, you know, the ordinance will also establish an appeal process. And then we also do have in here that owners of residential rental units can request a six-month credit for the first year. So this is really to address, you know, those landlords that have multiple properties and letting them ease into that, that full cost, and they can figure out how they want to, you know, pass that on to their tenants, that type of thing. So we've built that in intentionally for that purpose.
I see.
Yep. That is, I think I've covered everything. City managers, is there anything you wanted to add that?
No, I appreciate, Michelle, you putting that together and, and walking us through that. You know, as, as the mayor mentioned and Michelle mentioned, you know, it's been a, a long process. We did look at what the state law does, does allow, built that on that. And the state law really looks at the density, and, and when they establish that based on parcel fees. And so the reason that you see a disparity because of a residential being $45 annually, or $3.75 a month versus a, a commercial retail at a higher rate, is because the commercial retail is going to have a more dense when you have visitors come in, or customers come in. And the, the state and the legislation looks at it from that standpoint, that the application then is there's a rationale that the more dense an activity, the more likelihood, stronger likelihood that you would have the need for nine-one-one services. And so that's how the state, state law allows that to be parceled out figuratively and literally.
[laughing]
That was an unintended pun. So, but that's, that's how that. And, and as, you know, as we mentioned, we did look at Kenton County as a model. Initially, you know, Kenton County residential, I think, was like 75, if my memory serves me correct, or is $75 for a residential. You know, they've got a lot of the same area masses we do, but they are more highly compacted than, than we are here in McCracken County. And so, you know, they have a lot more of those units that are going to be in the higher, higher range, but also have a lot more services. But the, the $45 at residential, what we did is, we looked at the call volume over the last couple of years that we've had into our dispatch, and to see to kind of, okay, we also have an estimate of about $4 million that, of need for operational expenses and the upkeep and maintenance of the system. And so looking at the percentages based on the call volume is how we came into looking at ultimately residing on that parcel fee. To be honest, the first year, what we found from Kenton County was, you make an informed decision and, and the best that you can, but realistically, you know, there'll be some tweaking in, in, in subsequent years that will come on as those revenues start to come in. And, and they've gone through a couple of iterations since they first started there.
Yeah, let me, let me weigh in on that one, too. I mean, I do think that, you know, there's a little bit of an uncertainty in terms of what the total revenue will be because we can't know exactly how many of each parcel exactly that we have. We really don't have an accounting, so a 100% accurate accounting. We, we do have a, a pretty good idea, but to the city manager's point, again, our learning from Kenton County was that, you know, they had to do tweaking after the first year, after the first couple of years, and figure out, you know, where, where all the parcels were, how many apartments they had, and that sort of thing. So there's, there's still a lot of work that's, that's going to have to be done in this. But, but we believe this is a, a very fair and a, and a good start for us.
And part of that assessment process also included a, an engagement of an outside party to look at our GIS data that we had, plus working with our team members in technology department, and then taking the PVA data and overlaying that. And so we had to be able to, to give us, you know, the, a solid foundation from, from which to work. And, and while we, again, we won't know for sure until we get through the first year on it. I'm pretty confident that we have a, a lot better start than, than we would, and had we not taken the opportunity to go through that process earlier this year.
So how will people get their bill for it?
So the city and the county, both will bill independently. It will be on the tax bills for, for each one. So when our tax bills go out, there will be a line item on there for, based on the parcel data that comes in from the PVA. Then we'll upload that into our system, and there will be a line on our tax bill when it goes out.
And when does that, when does it go out?
We, we, yeah, we, we target getting it out in October, the end of October, middle of October, if, if at all possible, with the deadline of December 1st for payments.
Okay, for the full payment, or if they can do the two payments?
Right.
It would bill in October, and they would be responsible in December.
November 30th, isn't it?
Yeah, and that becomes delinquent in December 1st, yeah.
It's the same, follows the same program.
Right.
Yeah, as we do right now. It's just another line item on, on the tax bill.
And so can you explain the extension a little bit more, that, like, if somebody owns picture apartments in Paducah, what can they do to, because they probably can't immediately adjust their tenant's rent?
Right.
What would happen?
So they would be eligible for a six-month credit. They would come in, after they pay that, they would cut, how, all the way through, is it September 1st?
I think August 1st, is when they, when they have to apply by.
To apply for that credit.
They have to apply by August 1st. And then when does that credit run from, does it start December 1st and run for six months?
They would get reimbursed for what they paid. They would have an allocation back in, they would get up to $22.50 back per unit on that.
It'd be like in form of a check.
Credit, credit check.
Yeah. Back to, it's, it's written that, let me see how it specifically states that language, that that should be in section.
It's not that they just don't owe it, owe it for six months.
No.
They're getting a credit back?
For the first year only, owners of all occupied residential units shall be eligible to claim a credit of 2250 per unit against the annual fee. The credit, which is equivalent of six months' share of the fee, is granted to allow owners of rental property additional time to recover. Then in subsequent years, it's the full amount. And they have, shall submit and complete a form and attach to the finance department by August the 1st.
So they have to pay it.
And then.
And then they get a credit.
They regret.
Which would go against next year's.
Right.
Okay, I guess, do we think that we can get the word out enough? I think, that's a concern that I've been hearing about getting the, the word out to the landlords so that they can apply by August 1st. How are we going about that?
Well, I don't know that we've, I, I don't think we've got a plan for that yet. But if we've identified the, the owners, and we have identified them enough to bill them, then we can, we can somehow set up a communication plan to make sure they're aware. I think that's a good idea. So we would have to devise that. We would have to come up with that plan.
Well, I think we should.
Yes.
I mean, I think.
Yes. We want them to be aware this is available.
We hear all the time, people don't know what's going on. But if there's just a way to try to help get the word out to them more, I think we should, through some kind of letters and, you know, certs inside billings or whatever.
And we can definitely use all of our social media avenues and our public information office to, to continue to, as, once it's adopted and passed, that, to push that forward. Potentially, you know, in-person meetings as well, to, to stakeholder.
But if the county introduced it last night, they'll be voting in two weeks on it. Is that our plan, to try to vote in two weeks on it?
So, and to that point, I'll just say that, you know, the counties, you know, this has been a hard-fought process for a long time. You know, the last couple of years in particular, but really since 2015, 16. So the county, the city and the county, I mean, we worked through these final iterations of these, these documents, and we've agreed that we are 50-50 partners, you know, in nine-one-one. And so one of the things that I know is an, is an issue on the county's side, is, is being able to understand the structure of our budget, where we spend the money on nine-one-one. They are going to be looking for more detail about our budgeting process, and we are, we are committed to provide that, you know, the level of detail that, that they want as our full partners. I do think there's some concern on the county's side about the number of units times the fees, and, and really how all that is going to equal out after the first year. But as we've spoken earlier, I don't think there's any way that we can know for sure. And so we're going to have to take a bit of a leap of faith and work through it, and then figure out what the next steps are. But I just want to reiterate, reiterate that, you know, as, as full partners, you look at the board, there's two people appointed by the city, two people appointed by the county, one joint appointee. That board will be responsible for the oversight of nine-one-one. And, and, and so those, those board selections are very important because that, that board will need to work together to make sure that we maintain. I mean, I just want to say, you know, the, the city managing nine-one-one, I mean, everybody, I mean, nobody has said anything negative about that at all. I mean, the management of nine-one-one is, is excellent. And so I have to commend our police chief and, and those responsible for the management of nine-one-one. We're getting lots of kudos about that. We just are going to have to be, you know, as transparent as possible with the budget. Commissioner Smith?
Just a question. So, for instance, if we're 50-50, and I'm just hypothetically, it costs $10 million a year to run that nine-one-one, and our, our formula yields, I'm just making up numbers, four million, then we need to augment that with another million because we'll pay for half. And if the counties augment it by, they, they get, theirs brings in six million, they'll need to cut their, so these rates may, may diverge.
That's not the way it works.
No, no. So, so what we did, and so we'll give you closer numbers to, to realistic. So $4 million is, is what we looked at to what the operations and for the upkeep and maintenance is that. And so we look at, so we, we still get a, a small amount of dollars from the state under CMRS revenue. And so we take out the landline fees. So what is that delta that would need to be made up? And so we looked at structuring the fees to make up that delta. So the intent is to get as close to that. So if we collect, say, of that $4 million, let's, let's say that it is a little bit of disparity. Say that 2.5 million of that is collected in, within the city limits, and one and a half is collected by the revenue. That, that all goes into one pot. And it is split, that's, the state law requires it to go into that one pot.
All right, that's my question.
And then, yeah, and then the payments are allocated out of that. And then let's say that, that, you know, that board sets, and then says, oh, we actually need a four and a half million dollars, then both the city and the county would have to come up with 250 each.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then that's why we keep.
Great question.
The race, yeah.
And that, and that did come up more than once, and we talked through those issues with the county. And, and, and so really, you know, over the last six months, I guess we've had a, you know, six meetings?
I can tell there's a lot of work waiting for this.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
So anyway. From here.
I like to say something.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry. I thought you were kind of working your way around. So I do have a problem I get with the, with the rental, part of the six months now. If I know something's coming up in December, I guess, so if you can get a half, half of it back, that does make a little bit of sense to me. But the commercial, I, I just, I guess I wasn't in on the meetings, and that's kind of on, I, I just, I'm thinking back 22 years ago when we were, last time I was on the commission of nine-one-one, it's on the, I mean, we funded it with a dollar, dollar a month on our landline. And now we're getting $40 a month, $45 a month from each individual. Just, just seems like it's.
Well, $45 a year annually.
Yeah, $45, which that's gone up.
Right.
It's more than four times, which that's.
And it was $2 a month in the city.
In the city, yeah.
So, so it's, so that was $22 annually 30 years ago. And so we're.
That's about 3%. So I, I can go along. But, but the commercial, seems like that's just gone. And, and maybe, I'm just pulling, don't mean to subwool.
Again, lots and lots of meetings and talked through it. We thought it was a valid approach.
And, and the data from nine-one-one, the percentages of how we got into each one of that was used by our existing data from our, our run call volume out of dispatch for the last couple of years and looked at it like.
Sorry, I missed you, too.
No, I saw you working your way around, and you just slipped right in, too.
So we're going to move to a discussion item. And this is a long-awaited, we are, we are right at the, at the inception point of the new Paducah Sports Park, the outdoor sports complex. And Steve Irvin with the county has been the lead dog, if you will, on this project, along with a, a lot of other people for a long time. And it's great to have you here, Steve. And tell us where we are.
Thank you. And good evening. On behalf of the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission, I want to thank you, mayor, commissioner, and city manager, for your approximately $130 million in the first five years. The Paducah Sports Park will host approximately 35 to 40, and will be open to local sports teams 52 weeks a year. The sports tourism commission's original goals for the park is to high-quality athletic experience for the local community play, and further develop the unique brand and identity of Paducah and McCracken County. Area on the left, on the top area, is the Stuart Nelson Park, as it is right now. And that's where the multipurpose fields are going to go. You actually see three polygons in there, but there's actually five fields. To give you an idea, the size of those fields, the one at the top is approximately 250 by 500 feet. The two square ones you see right below that are 500 by 500 feet. The area to the south, well, actually, this is the Stuart Nelson Memorial. It's directly adjacent to Stuart Nelson Park Road and the community playground, directly to the north. to the north. This is a little bit of a blow up on it. A couple of things on top of the actual infrastructure being built, there is additional $100,000 for all other art.
When you say public art though, I'm saying, I thought there was supposed to be something specific-
Oh, that's, it is, it is specific to him, yes, I'm sorry.
The $100,000 for public art is specific to Stuart Nelson?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about just the park.
No, I thought you were talking about Stuart Nelson, specific type memorial artwork.
You're correct, ma'am. The community playground, which is directly adjacent to the memorial, is a large, open, public park. This entire scenario between these parks will be open, just like any normal park. There will be parking there. It is also directly adjacent to the disc golf course. There'll be, just be an area for people together. Walks and stuff around that area. Also, next to it, there will be a community structure that will have bathrooms, seating, covered areas. There's also adjacent to this, which is parking also for the disc golf. This kind of puts into a little bit of perspective. You see Field 10, which is up on the left, you see the public art parking, then you see the community playground. The disc golf course is going to be redeveloped. The disc golf course as planned right now will be the same length as the existing course.
Is that the Greenway Trail that goes down?
Yeah, the Greenway Trail is on the north side and south side of the disc golf course, but the Greenway Trail really is on the north side of the entire complex.
Okay.
Side amenities, the next slide, I'll show you kind of where these are going, but throughout the park, there'll be different types of shade structures and for bleachers above picnic tables, various areas throughout the park. This map here shows you really at the corner of every field. For instance, the baseball diamonds in the bottom right-hand side, there's actually three fields on each one, depending on the age group, there'll be shade structures at each corner.
There'll be bleachers under those shade structures? That's just for folding chairs?
No, it'd be for bleachers, there'll be bleachers under them, yes. As far as some of our buildings, this is the first one. It's a concession building within the baseball softball complex. Total self-sufficient, there'll be full kitchen, restrooms, they'll have first aid, mechanical rooms, bathrooms, of course. The next one is the concession building. This is at the multipurpose fields. It's very similar to the last one, except, I'm sorry, this is still the diamond fields. Okay. This is the one at the multipurpose fields. Above this concession stand, which is the same size, there is bathrooms and changing areas and a lounge area for referees to go during games when they don't, aren't refereeing.
So, there's three concession? Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
There is right, at this point, there is two. There's one at the baseball complex and then one at the multipurpose fields. And I'll show you why that is in just a few minutes. I spoke earlier about the community shelter that's adjacent to the playground with the bathrooms and the covered area. It's right here. Stuart Nelson Park Road, per the interlocal agreement, is part of the redevelopment plan. The traffic study that was completed by Bacon Pharma Workman called for an enhanced two-lane section from Stuart Nelson Park to about 350 feet before you get to US 60. At that point, it'll transition into a three-lane section to US 60 with a left turn lane out. The entire section will also have sidewalks down one side. And these pictures have been out for a long time. I'm just going to show you three or four for the citizens, just kind of give you an idea of some of the thoughts. The selection criteria group, which is part of your working group, reviewed the bids. We interviewed all the bidders over a four-day period and recommendations were made to the sports tourism commission and then on to you all for the contracts be awarded to. There was two different bid packages. The first one was bid package one, site and civil. There was three different bids submitted with that. They're recommending ANK construction. B, as part of bid package one, is turf. They're recommending sprint turf. And then three field lights, there were five bids submitted and they're recommending Musco be utilized. It should be noted that all three of those were also the low bidders as part of the bid process. In bid package two, there are two for buildings, ANK construction is the recommended contractor and that contract's before you. And on the kitchen equipment, we only received one bid, that was with Stafford Smith, which does a lot of work. And I'm not sure if you can see this, but I'm going to walk through it. This budget has been changing slightly every few days, but in general, the site civil package, which was bid package one, is $47,771,000 plus some change. The turf is at 6.321 million, field lights at 2.264 million, for a total of $56,357,401. When you start looking at building package two, it either says it's an ANK bid package one or it's been deferred. The reason we did that was for the simplicity of the contract, so there is no number for the building package at all. That $56 million number, that includes all the buildings also. Under FFNE, it's 4.571 million. You're looking at the food service equipment as part of that, but also when you start talking about FFNE, it's everything else in the park. It's all the temporary fences, it's the batting cages, it's the soccer goals, it's the mechanical, it's just a lot of different equipment to make it run. So, that is in total of 4.571 million. Under design fees, the original contract was for 2.8 million. We have additional design services, all these are within the total number of $250,000. Additional engineering at $50,000. Construction administration site inspections, that's going to allow somebody to be on-site for the entire 502-day construction process. No redesign cost for a total of $3.286,150,000. Some other indirect costs, the dog park cost associated, that's already happened, that's included in this, of $278,424. Some testing mitigation fees, utility connection fees. You see the SFD SFM, that's the Sports Facility Management Company contract. Right now, we have a pre-operating budget that is all being paid by STC until opening day. Some of those fees will eventually roll into the operating budget of the complex. Right now, there's a contingency of $984,390. The total comes out to $66,235,000. There's potential cost reduction, which already been approved and there's two lines there, those have been approved. And most of those are FFNE cost reduction items that were realized as part of the civil and building park cost reductions. So, when you look at the total then, total less reductions, the project is a $64,997,446. That leaves a budget negative of 628,000. It's a recommendation to move that back into contingency. We started out with a 1.5% contingency. By adding that 628,000, you get closer to the 3%, which on a project this size is needed. Funding strategy. The total project is really at 65, 625, the 500,000 is part of the state grant. Early on, when we started the design process, we set the budget at 65 million. That includes hard and soft cost, as you just saw. The first 25 million of the project is funded and $2,860,000 expended in design fees and other pre-development expenses. The second round of debt funding will need to be $40,500,000 for hard cost plus the issuance. Per the ILA, 80% of the transfer room tax will be dedicated to debt service. Given the average collection of about 1.4 million per year, about 1.12 million will be available for debt service. That amount supports about 14.5 million in borrowing. And I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump forward and then jump right back. In anticipation of debt service, last October, McCracken County started holding back 80% of the transfer room tax into a separate account to start paying that debt service in the future. So, as of last month, right now, we have 677,000 in that account made up of the 80% transfer room tax. The city and county with the budget that's been submitted will need to evenly split the 26 million. As the TRT expands or contracts, that share may fluctuate. So, if you go back to the top, you can see the original 12.5 million that was put in by the city and the county and then the second round of funding, 13 million city, 13 million county, and then the STC, the 14,500,000 supported by the 80% transfer room tax. When you add that all together, you get the 65,500,000. Coincidentally, last month was the biggest month for the transfer room tax, so.
How much was it?
I think the sports tourism got almost 160,000, usually it's around 100,000. Some notable deducts, the original proposals that came in were over budget. We went through about a 30-day cost reduction study to bring down the project to cost, to the budget. Some notable deducts, right now, you'll see a red polygon on the bottom right-hand corner. That includes Field 1. It also includes what I always refer to as a 650 building. It's a block, used to be the administration building for Bluegrass Downs. It's 650 square feet. That is a deduct at this point. Also attached to that on the left-hand side of that, this area right here, that was the maintenance complex, that was going to be a lay-down yard. The sports tourism commission, a year or so ago, purchased three 1,500-square-foot buildings there from the portal estate, so we already own those. That is a deduct at this point also. And the final deduct is the grandstand improvements. But at this time, what we'd recommend is, is that not be included in the development of the park, but that the grandstand remain pending redesign of that area. If you'll notice in the budget that I showed you, there was 250,000 for additional design. It would take into consideration that area. The full cost reduction list can be found with the contract approval documents that were sent to you last week. And basketball and pickleball also is a deduct. As I just mentioned, it's a recommendation that the grandstand remain pending polygon redesign. Also, as I said earlier, the rectangle fields and multipurpose soccer fields, they're self-sufficient. Contract length, I mentioned, it's 502 days. The interlocal agreement also, I wanted to bring to your attention, as it's written right now, the sports commission may approve change orders that amount not exceed 2% of total cost by moving that money we talked about earlier into the contingency that would cover that. Built also within the contracts are owner-elected allowances, the first 650 building. In other words, if we pulled those out, what's going to be going back in its place? We have to make it work as part of the redesign, new fences, landscaping, grass, other things. So, there's an allowance for 48,000 where the 650 building is now for the grandstand. There's 1.105, 105,000, 1,105,000. Field 1, 193,000, where the maintenance complex is 353. That really is to just help the existing three buildings are there. There'd be fencing that'd be put in and some rehab to those existing structures. And then, because we got rid of the main maintenance building and the office buildings that are within the grandstand, there's $166,000 for a leased building, which I'm getting ready to show you next. The sports tourism commission, several weeks ago, approved a lease agreement with a property owner on Stuart Nelson Park Road for a 6,000-square-foot structure. 4,000 square feet of that is clear span. Storage area that has loading ramps and has existing racks in it. There's 2,000 square feet of office space in there. It has actually worked out perfectly. It's directly adjacent to the sports park. This is the structure right there. This is where the baseball courts are going, so it's directly adjacent. And that's kind of quickly, please, any questions?
You mentioned something about pickleball. Could you go back over that again?
Sure. Within the original design, we wanted to have pickleball and basketball courts included in that. And the design was done. The bids came in, but because we needed to do the cost reduction, that was one area that was reduced. The original design, when we started this three or four years, also, we did not have the, I believe, eight pickleball courts of the city and now the 10 pickleball courts in McCracken County.
And the basketball courts at Noble Park, haven't they been resurfaced or planned to recently? So, they're all still there at Noble Park? So, we do still have basketball, we do still have plenty of pickleball.
But the design is complete. At some point in the future, if we ever wanted to move down that road and go out to bid again on those, they fit into the park. That space will remain.
If I can go back a little bit, when we began talking about the Stuart Nelson Memorial, I wrote myself a note and from the very beginning, what we've heard or what I've heard is that there's going to be a significant memorial made to Stuart Nelson. I guess, so my question is, what does a significant memorial look like? Does anybody know that just yet?
Well, what I can say is, as I'd mentioned earlier, is the infrastructure. Now, instead of just having a cost set aside for the memorial, what I believe is a significant infrastructure investment that has the plazas for that. And I'm going to let Jeff speak in just a second.
I told you to docked up everything.
Okay. This entire area is the memorial. Jeff, can you talk about what the features are in there?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So, this area, from the inception of this project, we knew that this was an important piece, that we needed to tell the story of the park, the park's history, Dr. Nelson and the significance of this park and our community and the region. So, this was a non-negotiable for our design team, the landscape architects who we hired from Indianapolis, they were all on board with this and they invested so much of their own time learning about Dr. Nelson, reading his writings and just, I mean, they went all in on trying to figure out how to best design this space. So, what we have here is just the infrastructure, as Steve said, sidewalks, plazas, nodes of activity to try to start to tell a story. Now, how we tell that story with sculpture, with interpretive pieces, we don't know that yet. And quite honestly, even though we're local, I grew up here, we need more input than just the design team on this. And so, we've had some initial community gatherings. We had several at WC Young Community Center last year. I don't know, time is lost on me at this point, on this project in some ways. But we had some community conversations. We've had, we've talked to the Paducah Historical Preservation Group with some of the folks there, Jevanta Dawson and Ron McCroy and Smith and just trying to have some of those conversations by trying to understand what does this space need to communicate? What are the, what's the story we need to tell and how do we best tell it? And so, we want to continue those conversations and what I hope is that folks in the community don't think that those decisions have already been made. They have not. We've created some infrastructure- We, we've created some infrastructure to, to begin to tell a larger story, but we want to continue the conversation. We've got time to design and, and add layers into this to appropriately tell the story that needs to be told about this park and this man, that, that needs to be told. So, so, you know, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions faster about that.
No, I'm good. I was just, you know, just wanting to know, basically, to, to clarify that a decision has not been made.
Correct, yeah, correct, correct.
Basically what I was trying to.
Yeah, we, we've laid the groundwork, but we need assistance in the next steps of how to tell the story, so, and what does that look like?
So what is the name of the complex?
The name of the complex is Paducah Sports Park as, as a whole, but Stuart Nelson Park, I, I think that the intent has always been to remain, for that to remain Stuart Nelson Park. We, we don't wanna, we don't want that to lose its identity in the name of that. So that's, that, I think that was kind of where, you know, this site has, you know, it's got two unique stories. It's got Bluegrass Downs side, it's got Stuart Nelson Park side. There's, there was a lot of discussion about naming and, and, and all that, and, and we were not in, the design team was not involved in any of that. You know, kind of by choice, we, we didn't, it wasn't really up to us. But, but I know discussions were that Stuart Nelson Park, that, that needed to retain its identity, that portion. And, and so that's part of that storytelling process. We, we even imagine beginning to tell that story on the Bluegrass Downs side as you enter the park at its main entrance. How, how do we begin to tell the story of the whole site of Bluegrass Downs, Stuart Nelson Park, and, and even there on the Bluegrass Downs side? And so, tho, those are things we're still wrestling through about how to, how to do that.
I, I got one other question.
Sir.
Is, the park will be open 52 weeks of the year. How will our local kids be able to access or utilize that park if they're not on a team? If they're not, you know, how, how does that work?
What would you answer that? Sheriff's operations?
As far as operations, we have sports facility companies onboard.
Yeah.
And they operate, for, for instance, when in Elizabeth Town, one of the first things that we're gonna be doing, when they get onboard, with the general manager starting to reach out to the community, the city of Paducah, plus the soccer, baseball, and try to figure out what the needs are within the community. So a lot of those things have not been figured out. We're building the infrastructure, and we've always said those guiding principles, that is also being built for the local community.
So I'd, I'd like to talk about the grandstand for just a second. I mean, I know that, maybe you could go back and, and let's talk a little bit. I think there, I want to make sure I understand, there was a, that what was eliminated, you know, as the, out of the final, in the cost reduction, Steve?
Yes, sir.
And just make sure that...
Slides aren't going as quick as my finger.
I understand.
So I'm probably gonna stop, and it's gonna keep going. One more. There we go.
Okay.
Yes. The polygon that you see right here is, is Field One, the grandstand, and the maintenance building. But the Field One and the grandstand, and the infrastructure around it is approximately 11, 12 million dollars. To, to get on budget, we had to exclude that, exclude that from new development. The thought is, though, yes, we have some money set aside to find out what that may look like if the grandstand's not there. The idea right now is, is that let's go ahead and award the contracts, but leave the grandstand right here as we go through the design process to see maybe if there's a way that we can keep that, and not make that final decision right now that the grandstand come out.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to quantify. So it's 11 or 12 million for the championship field and, and the, the grandstand?
FFE and infrastructure around it.
Yeah, and, and it, it could be a little bit more than that by the time you include field lighting and, and things like that. So it's, it's a significant cost. The, the grandstand has always been on this side of the park, kind of the, the signature piece. It was a unique piece. It told the story of Bluegrass Downs. I, I don't know of another sports park in the nation that, that one is built on the side of a former horse racing track that has a grandstand in it like that. It was always a unique piece that we wanted to keep. But the more we dug into it, and the more we realized the upgrades that it needed, all new plumbing, all new electrical, all new mechanical, you know, it, it began to grow on us, and not in a good way. So it just, you know, we, we wanted to go ahead and design it and how we wanted it. SFC guided the process, you know, what they, the functions they needed in it to make their operations work, concessions, you know, administrative areas, restrooms, and all that. But the, the, at this point, we just, as Steve said, we had to reduce the budget somehow, and this was a, an, an easy way to do it. We've, we've had some initial discussions already about how we can repurpose the grandstand, how we can scale it down, and what we do to it to, to make it more cost-effective, more budget-friendly, still a great signature piece for the park. But we just need some, a little bit of time to, to make some of those decisions and see what, what, what can be done and what needs to be done.
So the championship field without the grandstand, what does that number look like?
I, I believe it's 2, 2.2?
3.
Yeah.
With the lighting, with the lighting.
Astro turf.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And, and just to, you know, SFC, the, the championship field is a part of their pro forma, to have that in there. And so they, they do want to get that back. You know, it, it, that would be one of the first things to come back if it can and when it can. That's just, but, you know, the championship field is, it's, it's baseball, it's, you know, one large baseball field, three smaller baseball, or two smaller baseball fields, and a, and potentially a full soccer field, football field. So it, all these fields are multipurpose, and so it, it does remove some program space if it's not there, but, but it is one item that needs to come back pretty quickly if it can, so.
I guess for holding it out now, it buys us some time while we're putting the rest of it out for bid to determine if we want to go ahead and do that now, or we, or just what our plans would be in the future.
Yep. Well, I, I think what we were, we, we were wanting is to go ahead and award contracts, and then very shortly after that, awarding some new design services to start taking a closer look at that area, and it gives us some time to, to see if there's another opportunity to be able to save that structure.
I mean, definitely, we want to move forward with the bid packages. I mean, we don't want, you know, we don't want to hold those up at all.
Yeah, we have, there's.
That's what I'm saying, it just buys us some time.
Yeah.
To figure that out.
But you're gonna be coming back for more money, I guess.
No, sir.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
No, no, as far as the.
Well, if you decided to do it, yes, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm saying, yeah.
Well, I, I have not had those discussions with anybody.
But, but, so the, the field, doing the championship field, that's not included in this budget number?
It's not.
That's not. There's, there's nine fields, but not the championship field.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the process from here?
So the process from here is, is that under the ILA, you are now officially on the clock in the 20-day window to determine if you want to accept the recommendation by the Sports Tourism Commission to proceed as presented, or if you wanted to, to look at potential other reductions and, and, and issues. Both this body and the fiscal court have to agree to move forward on that, and you're both have 20 days to do that. If a decision is not made within 20 days, then the determination is to whether or not to continue those deliberations for another 60 days or not to, to try to get to an agreement between both parties. If at the end of the 60 days, you know, the, the ILA offers you the opportunity to say, we just can't get it done, and, you know, the, the project is not moving forward, or both bodies can agree to, to continue to have discussions. But the ILA also anticipated that the, you know, the project as presented before it went out to bid, the opinion of cost, if it came in close to that, that both bodies would, would recognize that they had had that information on the front side, and that was a potential of the cost aspect, and to move forward on that.
Is the transit room tax, is that taking all of it that they receive now to fund this 14 million?
It's 80% per month.
Okay, you said that, yeah.
And just for understanding, and I had finance get some numbers, and so if you looked at a 20-year bond payment based on current interest rates as of June 6th, I say current, but as of June 6th, which, that's right about 4.11%. If you had a $20 million debt service over 20 years, the annual debt service payment is gonna be about 1.5 million annually for 20 million.
But we're not doing the whole 20, though, right?
Well, so, no, I mean, I'm just giving you that.
Oh, because we do it together, and then we would be doing half of that.
Well, I mean, yeah, how it's, how it's bonded or whatever is to be determined. I mean, both bodies could do their portion and bond it. I, I will remind the commission that 12 and a half million dollars that we have allocated on the front side is bond money, and we are, you know, for us, we will have to be paying that back as part of that. For the county, their 12 and a half, they had the locutary of having ARPA funds and some other funds in there, and so that was federal funds that they won't have to. But if you, you know, talk to the $26 million delta that Steve mentioned, when you take in that 80% and what that could bond out, and then at this base, and so if you had a, a $13 million on this aspect, I don't want us to lose sight that also there is going, an anticipation that for the first few years, maybe up to the first five years, that you're probably gonna have to, both bodies are gonna have to subsidize, subsidize operations until those get up and going, and we don't know what that, we don't know what that, that might be. And so that's why I kind of, you know, just for understanding purposes, you know, I use that 20 million. If, if it's only a $15 million debt service, it's about 1.1 million. 20 million is about 1.5, and then 20, 25 million is 1.8 annual debt service on that, just for understanding purposes. And so if it, if it was, let's say the 26 million, so 13, let's use 15, that we're splitting, you know, the 1.1, splitting that in half, you know, 600,000 each on that for just debt service, the additional debt service on top of what we're already paying. And, you know, I made this, you know, this observation also previous when we talked about it, you know, that we talked about the 911 fee earlier. Right now, we're supplying, we're using general fund dollars of about 1.8 million dollars annually in our general fund to pay for our half of 911. If we have a, a, a fee that, that comes in to offset our costs for 911, then you have dollars available to make the debt payment in here. But you also don't have those dollars available for anything else, and it's not trying to find new dollars in that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. We appreciate it. We do have one public comment tonight from Ms. Cheryl Glor Goodwin, who came in, I think, after the meeting started, so sorry we missed you.
No, I was, I was here, I was just standing out there. I did the pledge of allegiance and all of that.
Oh, good.
Sorry you missed me.
It's great to see you.
Glad to be here. I'm not one for public speaking.
So you have three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that my time? Okay. I'm here on behalf of Southside and Coleman Park, and I'm advocating for better public restroom facilities. I recently started a group with my friend Ruth Baggott, Community, and what happened was, I went to the Lower Town Festival, and they were doing a painting project, and I was like, hmm, I'm gonna take that back to my neighborhood, just like they was just speaking about, kids in the lower-income neighborhoods, they don't have the ability to get around town. So I went back, repainted, we had a great time. The, what Ruth noticed was, the trash was over, you know, overbearing, and I actually went home and got a broom and cleaned up the, what do you call it, the shelter that we were in. But as the type of people we are, I love giving back in my community. I went back, again, Ruth and I, and we did another art session in the park, and this time we advertised it on Facebook. So as we're doing it, I did finger painting with the kids, you know, but it was washable paint, and they went to the little squirty thing, and, Miss Yol, Miss Yol, I can't wash my hands! Luckily, Ruth bought a bucket and had water, so we were able to get their hands clean. Then I had a father come up to me, and he says, um, where's the restrooms? And I say, oh, I'm so sorry, sir, we have porta potties, you know? And, you know, and I got to thinking, I'm like, hmm, we can do better than that. I mean, porta potties at a historical park like Blackburn, because I'm a long, I'm a lifelong resident, I've just retired, and I've moved back home, and I'm living in my parents' home across the street from the park. That park had concession stands, they had a maintenance room where we housed the baseball equipment and things like that. I'm also participating in the Southside, what is it, committee that they have, but I just heard, heard recently that the planning person is no longer here, so I'm gonna have to find out what's going on there. What I've also done is I brought you information of the art in the park that we're doing, and this is the information from Facebook. And Facebook, the posts reached over 1,400 people, and the engagement was 168, and out of that, we had 116 total votes. 107 of the people that participated were yay, and only nine were nay, that we do need a better facility up there. And with that, do you have any questions? And I'd like to know your opinion. And I did like what the gentleman was saying about the sports complex, and that's important. These kids don't have the ability to get around town like everybody else. And a lot of these kids, and I've spoken to school teachers, I've spoken with the housing authority, we're working with them, we're actually having people contact us to come do our thing for them. So that's why I'm trying to get very organized and, you know, get this, you know, out. But, you know, they have, there's children right here in Paducah that's never been down to the Putter Broadway. And these, this comes from educators telling me these things, and I was like, what? They've never been down to the river? You know, that's sad. So, you know, it's not much for me to give my time to walk across the street with a little, I have a wheelbarrow that I put all these little things in, and we just have a great time.
Thank, thank you.
But the restroom facilities, you know, they can do, we can do better.
Thank you. And, and, and I think there's been, there's definitely been internal discussions about that, and I think there, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think we have a long-term plan around that, so your input is well noted.
Okay, I, I hear you, Mayor, but when we gonna meet and talk about it? Because I need dates, times, and, and the, you know, 20-year plan.
You send me an email or call the office, and we'll, we'll talk.
We're gonna talk.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for doing the art program.
Oh, and thank you for getting it, you know, they did come and get the garbage up and refill the water things and everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, comments from our city manager?
Mayor Commission, the only comment I have tonight is to remind everybody that, you know, we have the Juneteenth celebration coming up next week. It will be a holiday, city services will be, their city, and team members will be off for the holiday, and invite everybody to the Carson Center for the event that evening.
Great. Okay, well, we do have an example. Okay, well, we do have an executive session tonight, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1G. Is that moved?
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And we do not anticipate taking any action when we come back.